Call the meeting to order, please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. All right, we're going to move to item three, approval of minutes of the meeting held on. I'm going to stop, sorry. Just, we do have one board member who is volunteering at a track meet tonight, so he is not going to be with us tonight. But we do a forum with the rest of us here. So, moving on to item three on the agenda, approval of minutes of meeting held on March 27th. Can I get a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, that motion passes. All right, we've got persons wishing to address the school board on non-agenda items. We do have five people that have signed up to address the board tonight. We'll start with Eric Van Beek. Again, state your name and your address, and then Carly will be your timer. You get five minutes.
They should get three, how are you slurring your time?
That's right, so how are you, you've got 15 minutes total.
I'll be as quick as possible.
Okay. All right, sounds good.
Oh, again, by the way. Eric Van Beek, 4500 South Yellowstone Lane, Sioux Falls, 57105. We as parents, coaches, and athletes are here to find reasonable solutions. We would love for an open dialogue, a conversation, to learn what the true expectations of the administration have for the gymnastics program. We are not here to speak and move on, we are here to work. We are capable professionals willing to do what is needed. Even greater, we are parents that will stop at nothing to fight for our child's passions, because we believe their passions are as important as any others. Cutting gymnastics is not a budget issue. There were funds set aside in the Jefferson construction. There were federal ESER funds set aside last year. Those funds were not used. That is not the program's fault. Even so, here we are, ready to fundraise, ready to promote, ready to, for conversation to find solutions, and ready to help. Cutting gymnastics is not an involvement issue. Here we are, parents, coaches, and athletes telling you right now that we are willing to keep and grow this program. Isn't that what the district wants? Passionate involvement, pride, and concern for one of their programs? You're looking at it. If cutting gymnastics is a participation issue, then what is the number you need? What are the numbers that must be met? We will work with administration to get them there, but we need to work together, making the program readily available and known to all middle school students and promoting in local clubs. This isn't a mandatory budget cut. We've shown that this is not about equipment. And as you'll soon hear from the next speaker, growth of this program is not only possible, but very probable. Then why would the ADs and this group of 21 individuals decide to cut this program? Again, this appears to be a solution, looking for a problem. The next few speakers will highlight powerful information and some very good solutions. What we are asking for is time to work together. Last week, we found out the program is simply being cut because the ADs think it should be. We learned this five, and I have five minutes to talk, and then I have to sit down. There are no conversations available. The parents and boosters have helped keep this program alive for 30 years, with our time and our money. Why not come to speak with us before cutting the program? We are here to find reasonable solutions, right now, ready to help support and grow this program. We have smart, resourceful, capable individuals, right here, right now. I can promise you that we can grow this program. Give us time, and we'll show you.
Next, we have Bobby Tibbetts.
My name is Bobby Tibbetts, 525 East Plum Creek Road, Sioux Falls, South Dakota. Eric's commitment to growing the program is real, and he does not stand alone. Parents, athletes, and community supporters of these athletes in this program will do what we need to do to reach the participation targets that you and administration want to see. And if it's about funding, we will raise funds. A decline in participation is not because the sport is unpopular or unwanted. It's because the organic feeders to the public school program have been slashed. A cut to the middle school gymnastics. Did you know that during the final year of the program, we had over 60 student athletes in the program? We heard that the last 10 years, the numbers have declined. From 2012 to 2016, in '12, we had 76 participants. 13, 89. 14, 103. 15, 133. Consolidation of programs, forcing additional declines. Students that need to travel across our city to get to practices that are held at another school deters gymnasts from getting involved. Defunding buses and providing transportation. As a mother of two middle schoolers, this matters. If this is a decision based on participation, let's talk numbers. The following are the female sports participation numbers for 2020 for Lincoln High School. Football, zero. Competitive cheer, this is a coed sport and a combined participation number of 21. To be clear, this is 21 total for both male and female. Competitive dance, 21, that's a combined number. Cross-country, also coed, 30. Powerlifting, you guessed it, coed, 15. Female wrestling, 14. Gymnastics, 25. Gymnastics has more participants than five of the six sports I just rattled off. 21. Football, zero. Cheer, coed, 28. Dance, a coed number of 21. Cross-country, a coed number of 34. Powerlifting doesn't have any numbers listed. Female wrestling, 12. Gymnastics, 19. Pretty respectable in comparison. What's most disappointing about the decision to cut gymnastics is that the process has lacked transparency, professionalism, and integrity. It feels biased and one-sided. Who's on this council? Was a decision made by an all-male, 21-member advisory council with minimum representation of high school female athletics and zero representation of gymnastics? If a decision was based on participation and was informed by data and facts, the committee would have surveyed the only existing feeder to support the sport, club gymnastics. An existing pipeline would have been revealed with the number of young ladies from the clubs looking to join the program just as soon as they can get there. All three clubs were surveyed, Wings, Power &amp; Grace, and All-American, and the numbers are promising. Of the 191 families that responded from both Wings and AAGA, 84% responded that their gymnast will be interested in competing in high school gymnastics, and most will take this route. 26% are going to enter 7th grade this fall, 2023. 18% in '24, 20% in '25, 13% in '26, 18% in '27, and 5% thereafter. 54% of AAGA respondents and 48% of Wings are in the Sioux Falls School District. You will have participation. I'm rattling this information, but we emailed all of this information to you guys this morning, so you have all of this. We've got the support of club gymnastics, not all gyms, but certainly a few. I can tell you that Alicia from Wings has been linking arms with us and fighting alongside of us for a board decision that does not cut this sport. She owns the gym, and she's an assistant coach with the Harrisburg High School team. She gets it. There's a universe where club gymnastics and high school gymnastics coincide, a beautiful partnership that focuses on the best interests of the athlete and allows us a partnership for all of us. We will collaborate with willing local gymnastics clubs to host training sessions and camps and to promote the high school gymnastics program. This partnership has already been offered to coaches on a go-forward. Thank you, Wings and Power &amp; Grace. And high school gymnastics will have a presence at elementary school and at each middle school, because we will promote the program through speaking engagements offered through the school. All schools, all skill levels, all in support of allowing more time in the deployment of a plan before a budget cut is made. We ask to be part of the conversation, and we commit to delivering solutions.
Alicia Reiners, I'm sorry, I'm just, I need to verify your address, 1601 East 77? Alicia, sorry, do you live in the Sioux Falls School District? Okay, this is reserved for Sioux Falls School District residents. So we have two more people wishing to address the board, Kevin Knapp. Okay, name and address, please.
Good evening, I'm Kevin Knapp, and I live at 1125 South Ebenezer Avenue, Sioux Falls. I'm presenting to you tonight as an 11-year, full-time teacher in the Sioux Falls School District. I coach freshman football, track, and field, and have served as the head gymnastics coach at Roosevelt and for this past year at Jefferson. Each of these sports serve a purpose in the lives of student athletes, and I am grateful for the growth and development opportunities that each provide. I want to share a vision about a coach whose success spans all sports and eras and is highly regarded as the pinnacle of what success looks like, John Wooden. He developed a pyramid of success built around character and morals, and at the top of the pyramid, one could hope to reach competitive greatness. Competitive greatness is being at your best when your best is needed, receiving enjoyment from a difficult challenge. It's not about winning and losing. It's about looking at yourself in the mirror, and at the end of the day, being able to say that you are proud, you left it all on the field, and you persevered. We, students, parents, families, coaches, and supporters, are willing to find solutions to keep gymnastics, and we seek your assistance. The first part of the solution I want to address is equipment. Number one, buying Jefferson a full set of equipment is not an immediate need. RHS, LHS, and WHS have equipment that they'd be willing to share, and some of that information was sent to you earlier on a PowerPoint. Number two, I was able to obtain quotes from two different AAI reps, and their prices are significantly less than the proposed $260,000 to $300,000. A complete gym that is equivalent to all the schools costs approximately $100,000, or a third of the cost. Equipment does not need to be replaced and updated over time, or does need to be replaced and updated over time, but it has a lifespan of 10 to 25 years with proper management. Number three, we will create a 501(c)(3) nonprofit that would be responsible for raising funds and purchasing new equipment for all the Sioux Falls gymnastics teams. Teams would be able to replace and update equipment through this gymnastics booster program. If each family was able to fundraise $250 this past year, we would have generated $11,000. Three and four years ago, we would have generated over $15,000 each year. This would support significant equipment upgrades in a short period of time across the district. Number four, gaining additional gym space. As a track coach, I appreciate the additional gym space gained from gymnastics equipment being taken down. As a gymnastics coach, I appreciate having the ability to coach and host camps at school. I think there is a way for all schools to accommodate accessibility to the gymnastics or multipurpose rooms. The second component of the solution is improving participation and acquiring qualified coaches. Number one, I reached out to both the owners of Power &amp; Grace and Wings Gymnastics about hosting clinics and camps for students grades K through 12 in the district. They are willing to provide this opportunity at no cost to the students. Number two, there are willing and able coaches to fill coaching vacancies. This past year, all assistant roles were filled, and there are two other candidates interested in head coaching positions. I have never been part of a budget committee, and I am sure that there are tough decisions to be made. Unfortunately, cutting a sport is a regrettable decision that cannot be reversed and has lifelong impacts on students, parents, and a sense of community. The district states it is the vision of the Sioux Falls School District Athletics Program to reach 100% of our student body, to be involved in a meaningful, interscholastic athletics activity. This vision statement tells me that we are collectively willing to seek and find solutions. I will close with a portion of a letter I received at the conclusion of the season from one of my seniors. Gymnastics saved my life, and I have to attribute so much of that experience to you. Every day, I would go the entire school day, not talking, head down, and counting the minutes until I could go to practice, because you made that gym my absolute favorite place to be. For me, gymnastics was the best part of high school. I originally joined because I couldn't afford a club, so having this opportunity was a big deal to me. This year, my mindset with the sport completely changed, and something finally clicked. I finally let go of fear and talked to myself instead of listening to myself, because the lessons you coached into us finally made sense. Each day, you pushed us to be better, and I can look back at the season and truly and wholeheartedly believe that I gave everything in me each day. I hope that we can look back at this decision and know that we were competitively great in this moment to keep gymnastics as a high school sport in Sioux Falls. Thank you.
Next, we have Maeve Botel. Okay, you have three minutes, Maeve.
Maeve Botel, 2210 South Pender Lane. I've done gymnastics for 10 years. After doing club gymnastics for eight years and reaching the highest level and competing nationally, I decided it was too much. I was leaving school early every day to go to practice. I was missing out on high school activities and being with my friends. Gymnastics became something I resented, not something I wanted to do. This is when I made the decision to continue my gymnastics career at the high school level. When I switched over to high school gymnastics two years ago, I never expected to get the amount of support I did from the community. I was overwhelmed by the attention I got from doing something I had been doing for eight years at the club level. Because of the support I got from our community, I want to remind you that you are elected officials here to represent those who voted for you to be here, which is the same community who gave me so much support when I competed in high school gymnastics. This decision is not one that should be influenced by any one athletic director or committee member. This is a decision that will affect the whole community, and as members of a board elected to represent this community, I hope you will take into account the support you are hearing for high school gymnastics. This choice means so much to little girls who, like me, feel stuck. They have devoted so much time and energy into gymnastics, but practicing 20 hours a week is simply too much. They need, they need to make a change, and if you take away high school gymnastics, you are taking away that second option for all those girls. You are taking away their opportunity to be a normal high school student while also competing in a sport they have done their whole life. In the last two years, I have found more joy than I have had in my entire life with gymnastics. You will probably never understand this fully, because you were never in my situation, but this sport at a high school level has changed my life. I will close by asking you to please look at the alternative options many people have given you to keep this sport alive in Sioux Falls. To look at ways you can give all those little girls coming up a chance to refine their passion for gymnastics. There are alternatives that can make this work. Finally, as you make your decision, please think about the goals, the dreams, and the hard work all these athletes have put in to this sport, and how it will feel if their school, a place that is supposed to cultivate these things, takes them all away. Thank you.
Appreciate everyone coming in, and we're going to move on with the agenda. Item five, persons wishing to address the school board on non-agenda items. There's no one signed up to speak. I was going to say you all don't have to stay for the rest of the meeting, but we're going to continue our business, so just quietly exit. We would appreciate that. Onto item six, approval of the agenda, can I get a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, that motion passes. And I'll give Deanne a couple minutes to come up and give us her good news report.
Good evening, I'm just here temporarily to introduce the principal of Lorabee Anderson Elementary, Wade Helleson, who is here tonight to share a school spotlight and shed some light on all the great things happening at Lorabee.
Let's, let's wait just a minute until the doors shut. If you can all make your way out, that would be great. Not that they weren't here for you, but we want to make sure that we can hear you.
All right, I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to just share some of the good things that are going on at Lorabee Anderson. I also want to thank you all for the hard work that you do and the things that you, the decisions that you make that benefit our students and our staff. So thank you very much. Lorabee Anderson is a special place. When I interviewed for the position of principal at Lorabee Anderson, I had to learn a little bit about who Lorabee Anderson was. I wondered about my experience in history class, because I didn't know who she was, but she was a local person, and Lorabee Anderson was one of the first schools in Sioux Falls that was named after a local person. She was the principal from, she was a teacher and principal from 1926 to 61, and the name was changed from Riverside to Lorabee Anderson in 63. Our mission at Lorabee Anderson is to interdependently nurture the hearts of children within a learning community driven by high expectations and academic success for all students. When I first read that mission statement, I fell in love with the building. It's a mouthful, but there's so much meat to that mission, and the first few words, interdependently nurture, was something that drew me to the school, and it rings true. Little bit about the school, we've got 342 students pre-K through 5, divided up with K-5 and early childhood numbers. There are about 65 staff members with all of our itinerant staff, and we serve the east, northeast corner of the city in the neighborhoods of Riverside, Norton, Frolic, and Valley View. We have a very beautifully diverse population at Lorabee Anderson. We celebrate their diversity, and we just recently had a culture night for our families, where they came in, and there are some photos that you'll see in the future. Those experiences and the things that families shared with our staff and with other families at LBA was a super fun night. One of the things that I feel is, speaks about our student body and our staff, is the positive school climate. When you walk into LBA, it just feels like a place that you want to be. We celebrate the climate, we communicate that to our students. It's just, it's just, there's something about it. There's a family, community with LBA, among the staff, among the families, and among the students. We have been implementing our PBIS with our be safe, be engaged, be respectful. This is what we stand on at LBA, and we have a matrix, and it goes throughout every portion of the day. One of the things that we've done since 2019 is ask our students some questions, and one of those questions that we ask, and we've been focusing on as a staff, is, does someone at LBA care about you? This was something that our LBA staff thought was something they had a lot of control over, and they wanted to see an improvement in this. And so we started in 2019 with 84%, and at the end of that focus time in May of 2022, we were up to 95% of our students that felt that someone cared about them at school. We want to shoot for 100, we're not done. One of the other things that we focused on as a staff is Hattie's work with teacher and student clarity. And so we want our students to know what they're learning. We want them to know why they're learning it, and we want them to know how they know that they have learned it. So we are asking our students these things, and so February 2022, you can see some of the, the data that is shown there. We've increased from 85 to 90% in what are you learning? Students being able to answer that question, and why are you learning it, has increased from 68% to 86%. And then how are you knowing you've learned it? We've taken a little bit of a dip there, but that's going to be our next focus point. Another thing that we're very proud of at Lorabee Anderson are the partnerships that we have. We have many, many partnerships, and they've just gotten more and more powerful, I would say. Sioux Falls Thrive has a weekly KidLink Riverside event at Lorabee Anderson. It's going on today from 5 to 6, so there were kids showing up as, as I left. And that's been something that's been going on since just before COVID, we started the planning process with that. We've also had Sioux Falls Neighborhood Soccer. We were the first kind of pilot program for that, and now it's gone to multiple schools. And we celebrated the first citywide event with a Lorabee Anderson or Riverside win, which was really exciting for our team. You can see the joy in the, the coaches and the parents and the kids in that photo. We've got our trophy proudly displayed in our trophy case. That other picture there is at the KidLink Riverside event. We've also got a wonderful church partner with Oak Hills Church. And City just finished doing a writing contest with our students, where they did a millionaire for a day. It was super exciting. For one student, they got to come to school in a limo and, and get celebrated with a donut party through the, this writing project. Promising Futures is also a wonderful support for our, our school. Here are some photos from our culture event. We've got, like I said, just beautiful diversity. We've got a staff that plays together and works hard to benefit our students and to our families. One of the, one of the stories, I just talked with a student this morning, and I know you've got a calendar thing on your, your agenda tonight, but she was asking her teacher, why we don't go to school through July? So if that's something, I said that I was talking to the school board tonight. She loves to come to school so much that she wants to go through July, and that just speaks to the community and the, the way that they love coming to school. This is another example of ways that we celebrate our students. We have a top B every quarter, and so each grade level, they have top B winners, and we're celebrating them. And you can see that trophy case where they're proudly displayed in the hall. And then something else that's been pretty special at LBA since 1975, there's a wall of fame. So every end of the year, we celebrate two or three students that are seniors in high school, and they go up on the wall of fame. So they're invited to our final top B assembly, and we celebrate their learning and their put on the wall. And I see many, many people that come into the school and check out that wall of fame and look for their name. And it's pretty exciting to see that, and to hear even the generational stories of the families that have come through Lorabee Anderson. Very proud of our school, we love our school, and just thank you for the opportunity to share about it.
Thank you very much. Can I share a compliment?
Yes.
You probably knew I would do this, didn't you? I have to say, as we've been working on positive behavior intervention supports, a big part of that is routines and procedures. Part of that is common expectations and hallways and how you move about the school. And I will tell you that Lorabee has the most impressive hallway behavior I would say just about any school in our district, which means kids understand the importance of not interrupting learning. They move quickly, so they maximize their time, and all of those things that we teach and the why behind what we do. But they've just done a great job of implementing. But they've just done a great job of implementing some of those things this year and it's noticeable and it's fun when you can see kind of the fruits of our labor, so good job.
We truly believe it's the best school in the universe.
I would just add that I think that's awesome and I also think that that is probably a reflection of 95% of your students feeling like somebody at school cares about them. And I think that people in general are more, I don't want to use the word compliant, but more willing to follow rules, to do a little bit extra when they feel like somebody cares about them. And so I think those are very well correlated and I think that's something to be very proud of, especially in an elementary school. We want those kids to continue on and kids who don't have that connection or don't feel like somebody cares at a young age have less reasons to continue on with their education if they don't feel like it matters. And so congratulations on the amazing work that you and your staff are doing and really making a difference for the kids in your community.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Moving on, did not have any new conflicts of interest, so we'll go on to item nine, approval of consent agenda. Can I get a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That motion passes. Onto item 10, supplemental consent agenda. We've got claims to Sanford A and B. Can I get a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That motion passes with one abstention from board member Ryder. All right, on to the reports of the superintendent, Dr. Stavum.
The ever-popular calendar. Just a few changes that we need to adjust for are wonderful weather and in a weekly thing we put out, I said nobody gets to say that they are too hot this week because we've had a long winter, but yet I did hear a little bit of that, which just shows how we sometimes don't adapt. But we have revision for this year and then the adoption for next year where we won't be going into July, but it's nice to hear, we'll see how that student feels when they're in high school. And then the 24, 25 calendar, just a reminder to our community, we go out that many years so that we're all kind of tracking together, knowing that occasionally we do have to make adjustments. So with that, Dr. Knoll, you can review the changes.
Good evening. I'll go through this evening with you three different calendars and it'll be this year's calendar to be approved and we'll stop after each one if there's any questions and then the approval of that calendar before we move on to the next. So I will start out here with the 2223 school year calendar, date changes. And the purpose of this report is to bring forward the recommended changes to the 2223 school calendar for the adoption process. And this is priority area of community engagement and truly this part of it, the explanation of this is to account for the five canceled days of school that we have had, so it's due to the inclement weather and to go through and present that to you as a school board for ratification. So we did have this past year, five days that we had missed of school, student days, due to school cancellation of inclement weather and those cancellations were December 16th, the two days in a row, January 3rd and 4th, and then February 22nd and 23rd. Days that we did have late starts are not required to be made up, they count as the full minutes through the state process in accounting for minutes for the school calendar. So those are the five days that I bring forward to you that were cancellations due to inclement weather. The proposal is, in accordance with the 2223 Sioux Falls School Board adopted calendar and the negotiated agreements, we are bringing forward to account for these missed days. Generally, the missed days are added on to the end of the school year, on the end of the calendar. That's what's been agreed upon through the negotiations. We are bringing forward as a leadership team, the recommendation as follows. We are recommending that the students make up two of the five missed days. The final student day would then be moved from Wednesday, which is currently May 24th, to Friday, May 26th. So they would make up two of those five missed days due to the inclement weather. The staff makeup would make up the five days as follows. The 25th and 26th would be student contact days. That would be the days in the semester test for the high schools would be on that 26th, which would be the 25th and 26th. Monday, the 29th is a holiday, so that day all are off. Tuesday, the 30th would be the teacher work day, so that'd be moved from the Thursday to that Tuesday, May 30th. And then Wednesday, May 31st through Friday, June 2nd would be district in-service time. So that would account for the five days that we missed with our staff and we'd be making up two of the five days with our students and students would be done on that Friday, May 26th. In the summary of this, the students of Sioux Falls School District, it is being proposed to you that they would make up two of the five days missed during the 2223 school year and their final day of school would be May 26th, which is Friday. The staff will have their teacher work day on Tuesday, May 30th and will complete the final three days of the contractual time as district in-service time, starting May 31st and ending on Friday, June 2nd. So I will stop there and the administrative recommendation to approve the recommended changes to the 2223 current school year calendar to account for the five days that we've missed due to inclement weather. And I'd stand by for any questions you may have on the 2223 school year calendar.
Any questions for Dr. Knoll?
Just that, you know, the one we do get is, do we have snow days built in? And we do have minutes built into our calendar to allow for this so that it does make sense to end on that Friday instead of continuing for the students after.
Yeah, and I think from a high school perspective, keeping in mind that those semester test days have to be consecutive days, so that would have pushed us into the Tuesday and Wednesday of the following week because those do have to be back-to-back days. And then to your point, we, there are a minimum number of minutes and it's really based on high school requires the most. And so we always have extra minutes because we don't just do the minimum that's required. And so it's nice to have a little bit of flexibility to be able to look at different scenarios, so.
I make a motion to accept the recommendation.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That motion passes. Thank you.
The second calendar that I bring forward to you is a change to the 2324 school calendar. This is one single date change, this is for next year's calendar. The recommended change to that 2324 school year calendar is truly just one day, it's a parent-teacher conferences night and we have had difficulty in the high schools with scheduling activities and events. That week, it's in the fall and currently it was set to be on a Monday and Tuesday night. That would be two nights of practice they would miss and it also would conflict with what we see this last year with the volleyball. And so as they go through with volleyball, so did not have them miss two practices and then also with the conflict with the volleyball matches. They went through with the activities directors and the principals at each of the high schools and tried to find a date that would work, that would impact the fewest number of students. And so they went back to being that a Monday and a Monday, so we'd move the Tuesday, October 24th of 2023, to Monday, October 16th. And so it'd be a Monday and a Monday and they found the fewest number of conflicts at the high school level. So this would only impact the high school parent-teacher conferences in just one of those nights. They'd still utilize that first one, the October 16th, which is not a board meeting night, to be a parent-teacher conference that would be in person and the second night of which, which they utilized this past year, would be more of a remote and virtual and they would contact parents in that manner. So the recommendation is to approve the requested date change for the first semester of parent-teacher conferences for the high schools as presented. This also went through out to the calendar committee and they did approve that as well. So the administrative recommendation is to approve that date change for the 2324 school year calendar.
I'd move to approve the request date change.
Second.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That passes.
And now the one that we wish we'd only present every single year because there would be no inclement weather, that would be the 2425 school calendar proposal. And so I will go through this proposal. This is the first year to be able to approve this or the first time to be able to see this and approve this and it went through the calendar committee unanimously. So I will go through with that information. The purpose of this is to obviously approve the 2425 school district calendar and for board adoption, the recommendation from the calendar committee. The priority area again is community engagement and the explanation of this is to present the school board adoption of the district calendar for the committee's recommendation or from the committee's recommendation for the 2425 school year. And so I will go through and highlight some of the main parts that we went through as a committee and talked about. We adhered to the guidance that we had set up a few years back, which started the school year with a two-day week, which is a Thursday and a Friday, followed by a four-day week, which would be that Monday through Thursday, and then the four-day week following Labor Day, which would be Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. So we'd have then a four-day Labor Day break and that was part of that compromise that we went through and made with individuals with our community. And so we maintained that process as we start out the school year with a two-day, four-day, and four-day week with a four-day Labor Day break. The calendar committee also maintained concluding school year prior to the Memorial Day weekend. Other things that we looked at, no student attendance on the Native American nor Martin Luther King Junior days. We also had added into that no longer having teachers and corresponding nine-month staff per the calendar. They will not be in attendance on Native American Day and Martin Luther King Days as well. We did put in a compensatory day in March that corresponds generally with the state basketball tournament. In that given year, the 2425 school year would be the girls' state basketball tournament, which will be hosted in East River. And then February 3rd will be that full day of in-service in the AM district and then PM would be the building. And that allows our elementaries to be able to have parent-teacher conferences in that afternoon because it's very difficult for a lot of our elementaries to be able to get all the parent-teacher conferences in in just the two evenings. If you have 28 students, to be able to spread that out over time, conferences, they need part of that afternoon to be able to do that. So we'd implemented and changed that from a January date to a February date so it doesn't conflict with no meeting days. And so that was maintained as well. Some of the important dates that we look forward to that you will see on this calendar, the first day of August, or the first day of school is August 22nd. Then we do look at that Native American Day being October 14th. January 9th would be the end of the first semester. January 20th, we would not have school for Martin Luther King Junior Day observance. March 14th is the compensatory day for parent-teacher conferences and that's where the state basketball tournament is held as well. May 18th, graduation day. If you recall, we did that a couple of years ago where we moved graduation to be the week prior to the last day of the students. And May 21st would be the recommended last student day. There was a couple of other things that the committee had discussed and asked that we bring forward. The additional recommendations from the calendar committee were to consider the following things and so this is just more of an FYI to use the board, but we will consider this and go through and continue the conversation about considering e-learning or remote learning for some of the future inclement weather days. And that was a 16 to 6 vote on that. And then it was also discussed in there about adding in additional snow days and you had alluded to that. We do have more days than the minimum that the state requires and we hope to always maintain more days than the minimum state requirements. So we have those days built in there. We try to make those up where possible, but we're not always required to by law, by state law. But we also did talk about that to not build in additional snow days to the calendar, but to continue to use our current method. Our current method is adding additional days at the end of the year. So for example, this year we added two of the five onto the end of the year. The committee just discussed through that and really felt that that would be a much easier system for people to know that it's always added on to the end, whether we would have, in comparison to having a day during the year that would be considered a flex day, that you may have it off or you may not, depending on how many days we've missed prior. So that was voted on 16 to 4 by the calendar committee. So those are two things that we'll continue to look through and discuss, especially with that e-learning for the next year, if that becomes more of an option for us, especially with our platform that we're using now. Committee participation, we have 30 members and we actually have 31 now because we did add representative from Kids, Inc., which will change to next year, but we do have 31 members on there now. And they represent building administration, central administration, clerical, our contract employees, custodians, custodial managers, educational assistants, human resources, informational technology services, Kids, Inc., parents, school board members, SFBA, and specialists and teachers from all levels. We do have six parents that do sit on that committee to help us make these decisions as we go through and present this information. In summary, the calendar committee reviewed information submitted to the committee by various groups represented on the committee and the previous survey feedback from our stakeholders that we completed a few years back. The calendar committee approved by a vote of 26 to 0 the proposed 2425 school year calendar. And our administrative recommendation approved the 2425 school year calendar based on the calendar committee's work and recommendation as detailed in the attached information. And I do have here for you the calendar as well, that's hard to see up there, but you will see that it follows pretty much the same type of a calendar setup that we've had for the last five years now. And we adapt a few things as far as the Native American Day and Martin Luther King Junior, but other than that, it's maintained that test of time for the last six years. So I bring forward to you the recommended 2425 school year calendar for your approval. I'll stand by for any questions.
Any questions for Dr. Knoll? Can I get a motion in a second to approve the adoption of the school calendar for 2024 slash 2025?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That motion passes. All right, thank you. And on to the review and revision of school district policies and regulations. Mr. Ehrens.
Thank you. So on behalf of the policy review committee, I'm bringing forward five policies and their accompanying regulations for review. These are up on our review revise, so just one reading. The policies are EC, EGAD, JC, JKA, and JLF. Of these policies, four of them were recommending no changes. And then in policy JKA, just one small change and that's to update or remove the reference to the specific training program used. With that, if you don't have any questions, I'd ask that you approve the review revise of these five policies and their accompanying regulations.
Second. Can I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That passes. Thank you. Anything else for the good of the order tonight? No? Okay. Can I get a motion in a second to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.